Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It was good. It was productive.
I mean, it was, you know, collaborative. I know because.
Where is that newsletter posted that went out to the Borough?
On the Mayor Council page.
Okay, I loved it. Yes, that was great.
I mailed a package on Saturday and it arrived today. How you doing? We good to go? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular council meeting for the Borough Beach Haven. It is Monday, March fourteenth at six P M. And would you please join us for the flag salute led by Mr. Allen?
First, we do the New Jersey Elder Public Meanings Act adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in the Beach Haven Municipal Building, on the Borough West site and mailing the same to the Beach Haven minds. The Asbury Park Press and the Press of Atlantic City. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Here.
Dr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Here.
Mayor Lambert?
Here.
Cash receipts in the current fund account for the period of February first through February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two were two million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and thirteen cents.
I have to be.
Cash dispersments in the current fund account for the month of February twenty twenty-two total three million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. The cash balance in the current fund account as of this period totaled fifteen million four hundred and ninety-one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Cash receipts in the water utility account for the period of February first to February twenty-eighth were ten thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents. Cash dispersments in the water utility account for the month of February totaled two hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents. And the cash balance in the water utility account as of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two was three million six hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. And before I hand it over to you, coming out very quickly, there is an ordinance on the agenda for tonight's bond ordinance for the water utility. As you know, Chris Carson has taken over the superintendent duties of both the public works and the water utility for the past year. During that time, he's become increasingly concerned with the 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 state of the underground infrastructure, of the fragility of that. The underground infrastructure is approximately eighty years old, and the ductile steel water mains that transport the large amounts of water around the town and the laterals that service each individual dwelling are extremely fragile. Over the years, the walls of the mains have become rusted and thin and in some cases blocked with buildup. Many mains and laterals are undersized and the valves have seized, and in some areas additional valves are also needed. Over the past fourteen years, the Borough has refurbished the water tower, installed water meters, drilled an additional well, replaced some mains, improved the plant facility and replaced hydrants and purchased the valve exerciser equip- equipment. These improvements totaled approximately twelve million or nine hundred and twenty thousand per year. Today, we still have eighty thousand linear feet of old pipe that needs to be replaced, and we're currently also mandated by the state to begin to replace the lead copper laterals by twenty thirty-two. So with that said, the Borough already has a couple of large D O T projects and the pump station project in the pipeline that gives us the opportunity to, while the streets are open, replace those mains along with it. So the ordinance tonight is going to begin phase one of a massive townwide water main replacement project so that we can piggyback onto the projects that are in the pipeline for this year that streets are going to be opening. So the ordinance is for nine hundred and fifty thousand, and that's for phase one. And we anticipate phase five to be in twenty twenty-six. Those are the largest chunks of the infrastructure. And then after that, we can break it down, just divide it up, what's left in linear feet divided up over a number of years. We expect to be complete by twenty forty-two. I just wanted to give a little rundown.
Thank you.
So I just have a where how is how is this being funded? Is this coming from the straight from the water utility?
So this first phase is a bond ordinance. Yeah, so it would be short of a bond anticipation note. Charles, there.
Like as capital?
Yes. In the water utility. Yes, water capital.
How long would that?
It's a it's a one-year note, which.
But you're talking in a microphone again.
Can I sit?
Sure.
The it's a bond anticipation note. It's the water capital ordinance, bond ordinance. So we'll be funding it with a bond anticipation note, which is what we utilize for all of our ordinances at this point, with the exception of going to the N J E I T, the I bank. But it is a one-year note. It's temporary with you can roll over for up to ten years. It has a maturity of ten years.
Thank you.
That's what I have for managers before.
Okay. Now I was gonna say, yeah, not not yet.
I have minutes without formal reading, February fourteenth, regular meeting, a February fourteenth executive session, February twenty-first special meeting, and a February twenty-fourth agenda meeting.
Everybody have a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns, or do-overs? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for February fourteenth? Regular meeting, oh, sorry, executive, February twenty-first special meeting and February twenty-fourth agenda?
Thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two zero four, calendar year twenty twenty-two, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limit and to establish a cap bank pursuant to N J S A forty-eight colon four dash forty-five fourteen, final reading.
Okay, since it is the final reading, it's open to the public. Anybody like to speak to this issue? Make yourself known. Three minutes for requesting.
No?
Seeing none.
All right, seeing none. And excuse me, we will close it to public comment. And is there a motion? Well, I should ask, is anybody in the council have any comments or anything on this one? No? Okay. This is kind of a pro forma one, as we discussed before. Okay, is there a motion to approve twenty twenty-two dash oh four?
So moved. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Marjorie Henderson, could you please mute yourself? Ordinance twenty twenty-two zero five C, an ordinance amending chapter two dash two E two subsection E of the Borough Code of the Borough of Beach Haven to establish timings and criteria for the Borough Manager Performance Review, final reading.
As final reading, open again to public discussion. Is there anyone who'd like to speak?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, we'll close it to public discussion. Is there a motion to approve twenty twenty-two dash zero five C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two zero six C, an ordinance amending chapter one ninety-nine dash six, parking time limited on certain streets of the Borough Code of the Borough Beach Haven to establish a program for curbside pickup parking spaces, first reading.
Okay, as first reading, there's no public comment, but would the council like to weigh in on this?
Well, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea to do this. I think it'll help with the traffic problems in town. I guess the only thing, I guess, Sherry, you've established about how many parking spots are, about how many parking spots are, what will be affected?
A max of two per applicant will be approved.
And it's strictly up to somebody to request it. Otherwise, it just doesn't automatically happen.
The process is requested, and then it comes for annuals, annual approval, and the council would adopt a resolution annually designating the spaces for the season.
Thank you.
And we would be demarcating this for these businesses like we did during.
Yes, exactly like that by date, and then the businesses would be responsible for signing to the form subject to.
Thank you. Anything else regarding this one? No? Then is there a motion to approve twenty twenty-two dash zero six C?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yeah.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two zero seven, bond ordinance authorizing various borough-wide water main system improvements, phase one, by the water utility in and for the Borough Beach Haven in the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appropriating nine hundred and fifty thousand therefore, and authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and fifty thousand bonds or notes to finance part of a cost thereof, first reading.
Okay, not open to public comment, but anybody on the council like to weigh in on anything?
Who estimated the the project cost on this?
Well, Chris and Frank worked together for the estimate.
Well, to me, this makes a lot of sense, particularly since we're utilizing a period of time the roads are open to get this done, which will save money in the long run, and we all know it needs to be done.
Yeah, I was in on that meeting, as I explained before, and it was kind of scary actually to hear what our infrastructure looks like. And I do think, I think one of my pet peeves is when the road gets open, then it gets closed, and it gets open. So I think this is a good move.
Talk, and I've been working with Bruce on the possibility of implementing a moratorium as we work through these areas.
Okay.
Anybody else?
The bond houses can be paid back by the water utility fund, or is this going to come through taxation?
This is a water utility, water capital ordinance, so it's funded entirely by water rent revenues. Water utility is independent of of current, correct?
Anything else? Nope. Okay, so is there a motion then to approve twenty twenty-two dash zero seven?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
All items listed under item consent agenda are considered to be routine by the municipal council and will be enacted in one motion by the form listed. Any item requiring expenditure supported by a certification of availability of funds, any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately. All consent agenda items will be reflected in full of the minutes. Resolution seventy-five, authorizing to advertise for bids for ice cream vendors. Seventy-six, acknowledging a managerial appointment to the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee, McAndrews. Seventy-seven, returning remaining escrow. Seventy-eight, returning street opening bond. Seventy-nine, returning off-duty police detail. Eighty, authorizing submission of amusement licenses, M G three through M G thirteen. Eighty-one, awarding a contract to Bray Co Inc. for the twenty twenty-two bulkhead replacement project, Twelfth Street and Coral Street. Eighty-two, is certifying the twenty twenty-one low staff list of eligibles for the fire company. Eighty-three, certifying the twenty twenty-one low staff list of eligibles for the first aid squad. Eighty-four is memorializing a contract between the Borough Beach Haven and the Office Professionals, Teamsters Local Thirty-five. Eighty-five is approving a dredge license agreement between the Borough Beach Haven and Harborview Club and Marina Association. Eighty-six is updating the twenty twenty-two prosecutor's roster. Eighty-seven, accepting an employee resignation. Eighty-eight, allowing the budget to be read by title only. Ninety is allowing self-examination of the budget as required by D C A. Ninety-one, awarding a contract to Shorelands Construction Inc. for the twenty twenty-two Public Works Garage, phase two interior improvements. Ninety-two, amending the Borough's Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Ninety-three is authorizing an expenditure for the purchase of a twenty twenty-two Chevrolet Tahoe for the Police Department. And ninety-four is executing a sidebar agreement with the Teamsters Local Ninety-five.
I didn't see this earlier on. Can I, the Tahoe that we're purchasing, is that new, like, we didn't have this from the capital.
It was appropriate in a previous.
It was, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure it was something new.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I know it's a pretty formidable list. Yeah, is there anything you want to pull or talk about?
Can we pull eighty-eight, please? And then approve the rest. Eighty-eight? Allowing the budget to be read by title only?
You're pulling that?
I thought we were going to discuss it.
Is that under the introduction?
Regardless, I don't want to read the title of the budget in full.
No. We're talking about amended.
So the resolution, if I correctly understand it, the resolution just allows it to be read by title only instead of reading the entire budget.
Not that it's gone.
Then it gets, then it gets voted on, correct? Then it would get voted on and then.
So if we wanted to discuss an amendment to it, that's what.
I don't think you would pull that resolution because you're still going to, when you do introduce the budget, you're still going to introduce it and read it by title only. But the, but it still needs to go to a vote.
Right, the resolution doesn't do anything to approve the budget, just allows you to adopt it by title.
Still want to amend it, when, when are we going to discuss that?
When we get down to the introduction of budget.
I got you.
Are there any other items that anybody like to pull or? No, if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda resolutions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ball Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Hand it over.
Okay, Sherry?
One second. So Sherry, do you read the one sheet in the budget?
When we're ready to introduce, yes.
So are we not there then?
You wanted to discuss some specifics, right?
Okay, so normally, right now, we would read the, there is a page, there's verbiage right out of the budget, which summarizes it. We would read that. I also have some key highlights that we would just discuss, and I would discuss the budget, how it is in summary. So I guess if there are other conversations or questions concerning the details, we've gone over it at last week's meeting. So I don't, there's not much I can say right now if we're not moving forward with that process, I guess. Does that just open the floor then for discussion on?
Can you just start with a highlight, Sherry, the summary highlights, and then we'll open it to the council questions?
Okay, so again, without reading it from the budget, the highlights that I have, the total budget, the total appropriation and total revenue is thirteen million six hundred and seven thousand eight thirty-four and nineteen cents, which is an increase of three hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars and thirteen cents from twenty twenty-one, which is a two-point-five-one percent overall increase. That it's identified changes from twenty twenty-one, salary and wage increased three hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars, which equates to a six percent increase. And the operating expenses actually had a small reduction of six thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents, which equates to a point zero eight percent decrease. The amount to be raised by taxation is eight million two hundred and one thousand six ninety-three and thirty-seven cents, which is a zero percent increase in the tax rate from twenty twenty-one. The tax rate stays the same at point eight-three percent. The net valuation is two-point-one-four billion, which is an increase of eight million over the prior year. The library appropriation, which again is the same appropriation mandated by the state, and it's the same on the appropriation side as the revenue side, is eight hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is an increase of seventy-two thousand seven eighteen oh six from twenty twenty-one. The water utility budget has no change in the total value of last year in one million eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Just some key, key things from last year, some things to highlight. We were awarded, the American Rescue Plan Funds as part of the local fiscal recovery funds program, we were awarded a hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. These are the COVID funds that we have been discussing. One small change from last week's meeting that we discussed, where we were going to run it through as a grant, which we were putting it on the revenue side as an anticipated revenue, and also on the appropriation side as a grant. I've since had a conversation since last week, just so you all are aware with our auditor, and there has been some new legislation that now they are allowing us to use those funds as a source of revenue in the budget as what we call revenue loss. And one of the, that was one of the elements from before that I didn't necessarily think we qualified for because we didn't necessarily have a revenue loss from the prior year. And it came with calculations that needed to be done. They are now saying that if you receive funds less than ten million dollars from this program, that you are allowed to insert it into the budget as a source of a revenue without having to show your calculation. So that was the path that the auditor advised us, instead of running it through a grant section, grant comes with a lot more reporting and quarterly reporting and maintaining and record-keeping. This way, I changed it, I put it in as a source of revenue and offset it with our surplus, which was the discussion we also had last week on how do we balance the budget utilizing surplus and taxes? So I actually reduced our surplus that we are utilizing for the same dollar value of the hundred and twenty-six thousand. In twenty twenty-one, we were given relief also through COVID programs. We were relieved of our C D L, our Community Disaster Loan, which I think we're all aware, we took that loan out after Sandy, we were awarded one-point-seven million back in two thousand fourteen, I believe. We have been appropriating that starting in two thousand nineteen, and we were required to put one-fifth of that along with the interest calculation into our budget. This would have been our year four of year five, and then we would have had to pay it back in full next year, but the state forgave that loan for us, so that equated to a one-point-seven million dollar forgiveness with, we had a hundred and eighty thousand calculated in interest up to this point. So those are, we had a relief on the appropriation side, a nice relief with the debt service. Our debt service went down, I believe, about almost four hundred thousand. So that was nice. That is really the the summary that I would present. So if there is any discussion or questions now, the next thing we would normally do, like I said, is read the one page from the budget. Sherry would read that, and then we would move forward.
So I had a question. I apologize. A question about the salary and wage sheet, and I apologize. I thought that the budget would have, could have been read by title only if you were going to amend it.
That's fine.
Miscommunication was on my part. So in salary and wage, we did increase five-point-ninety percent, and we had and that's, we had various negotiations this year, and that was, that was the result. So my concern is that on, in the Police Department, which we're not negotiating last year, there's an open vacancy, and the open vacancy is not because we lost a police officer, it's just an open vacancy based on a report that I guess was done years ago before I was on council. So my concern is, is that if we are increasing salary and wages on six percent, and now we're having another vacancy, ultimately, we're going to increase again next year, and I feel like we need to bounce that out and not have that vacancy in the in the Police Department. That line item, you want to see that? I want to see that line item removed because it's going to increase. That's a very big position. Right, because it impacts our fund balance, right? Like that amount of money significantly, not really that significantly, but yeah. Well, this is a contracted employee with with steps and.
Right, it would be a new employee brought in that was a request by the department head, by the chief, based on a recommendation from a few years prior. So yes, if, so a couple of things. By having it in the budget, I don't believe is the full authority to hire. I believe that would come with some further discussion where I think council would have the ability to say yes or no, we are hiring somebody. So there.
My concern is if we're already increased by six percent, why are we increasing even more at this time point?
I.
But that includes the fifty, that includes that amount in there.
No, so you're right, it does include that.
Increase of six percent.
Correct. So like I said, there's a couple of things here. I, I don't think that necessarily gives the authority to hire. So that's one. That could follow up with a further discussion down the road, and, you know, are we hiring another officer? Are we not? The funds would be here just as a placeholder if need be. We can either not introduce the budget, which is not, which is perfectly fine. We can do that, we could remove that. We would just introduce it the next agenda meeting instead. If we left it in there and we still decided not to hire, it would just be unspent funds, which at the end of twenty twenty-three, because it would sit in our reserve budget next year, and it would be unspent funds that in the twenty twenty-three would then just roll right back into the surplus. So it's, it's, it's one or the other. I, I I don't, right, I agree. I don't decide that makes sense. That is a valid point. But I guess what I'm saying is it's, right, we could certainly do that. That is, I guess that would come with, how would that work? Would that come with a vote?
The appropriation is fifty thousand? And what's the full salary and wage budget?
For that line item or total?
If you took that line item out, you'd see a very small decrease in your percentage overall.
For this.
It's a fifty, I believe it's, let me see, it's fifty-five thousand.
Then the discussion would continue, and, you know, if the chief is here to have meetings with you, and then if the decision is made that you're going to hire, then you're gonna, then you're gonna find yourself putting it back in. It's always best to just stay steady. It's been in the budget before. And, and the promotion has also been in the budget before.
I don't remember that they can see last.
Not last year, prior.
But over the years, we often have this sort of thing. And by having it, even if we're not using it, if something came up that we really needed. that we really needed somebody in this situation, a police officer, who really needed and there was an issue, we could do it fast. Otherwise, if you take it out of the budget, you'd have to go through a whole process to get it back in the budget. So you can't move very fast. I mean, in, in, in the past, we've gone through the budget to try to find money to be able to do something that was desperately needing to be done. And otherwise, you'd have to wait and go through a lot of rigmarole. So I.
I'm kind of just, can you just, I'm confused on what would, what do you mean, like an emergency situation where you would need a police officer?
Well, let's say we had another catastrophe. I mean, let, let's say a plane crashed in the middle of the.
That would be emergency.
Well, true, but I, I mean.
That would be funded under emergency.
We had another hurricane. I mean, may, maybe the kids that are disrupting the town are getting worse. But I mean, it, it, it doesn't mean that we have to hire the personnel. But if something happened, what, what, what's the point of taking, taking it out of the budget? We're not gonna, Jim just can't go out and hire somebody without our approval.
We can't keep funding positions that we don't have the.
Well, we're not really funding it.
We are. This is step one, vacancy.
Well, to be, you know, but I mean, that doesn't.
Very, you know, these salaries are very, very significant.
Well, they are significant. We started adding the pension and the beginning police officer salaries, outrageous, they move up pretty fast.
If you look at a yearly jump, I mean, it is. It's a very, it's a very significant position.
It does still up pretty fast. But, but on the other hand, you might have a situation where you really want a police officer. We, we don't have to hire, I mean, it's not like just because it's there, we, we're going to hire somebody.
And I don't know if a fifty thousand dollar decrease in salary and wage is going to make a big dent in that percentage.
What, what would it do if you subtract them? I don't know.
It would your head, Sherry.
I mean, it's.
I'm trying to do it myself.
We just learned in our, in our meeting, you're looking at the small amount, you're looking at the small, the short term. And where when you're hiring a vacancy of this magnitude, it's not the short, short term that you're looking at, it's the long term. So it doesn't matter if it decreases this budget by fifty thousand. In the long run, this is a very significant.
But actually saying though.
That's true, but that, I mean, you can have this in the budget for ten years. I mean, if the town does grow, you're gonna probably need more police officers.
I would go, I would grow. What?
If the town grows, you'll have more taxes to pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, this year just makes sense. We have such a jump in salary and wage. Why are we increasing salary and wage? Why are we offering more positions when we're, if we didn't have these CDL loans and stuff like that, we would be raising taxes. We would have no choice.
True.
So it just doesn't make sense to me. It has to be a balancing act. It has to even out. We're very top heavy on the police department right now. So it doesn't make sense to keep hiring when we don't have. We want to balance it out. That's all.
Well, I, you know, I don't, I don't really care one way or the other. I don't really want to hire another police officer at the moment, but I, I just don't see that any problem.
I just like things cleaned up. Like if you don't need it, don't put it. It's like.
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think the fact is that we don't have to hire them, you know, at the bottom line, you know. Right.
There's a vacancy that starts the process. Well, and it's the same conversation you have about this Leo budget, right? So, you know, that increased this, this year as well. But yet, as Officer Captain Metal said last meeting, that you've only gotten fifteen applications, but we've increased that. So that's also another thing. Why are we increasing that if we really haven't even met where we need for what we're going to, you know, spend for? So I see both sides. I don't, I just depend on my. I mean, if this was that important, then the, you know, I feel like the department heads would come and say, this is, I have no idea what this report is. I've never heard of it. And it's just like, okay, we're gonna hire someone else based on a report that I have never read. I have never seen. No one has ever explained it to me. And I just can't say yes to something when I don't have the full picture. That's all.
Would we have the full picture by, because you said this has to be done by the end of the month, correct?
If we don't introduce tonight, right, I would say we should introduce at the next agenda meeting. Will still be okay.
Ultimately hold up introduction of the budget?
Right.
I just don't understand why you just can't amend it and take it out.
Because it's, we're reporting figures right now that we don't have all of the figures corrected.
Okay.
Any other topics?
I don't know. I've never done that where we would introduce it with also removing something. So if we don't have the totals correct, when you introduce it, you read it by, but reading it by title only, we are reporting what the dollar value is.
That's what, yeah, that's why I thought that.
So we don't have that quite yet to report if we are removing something.
So where do we go from here?
Do we present it for a vote or do you just delay it based on a concern?
As long as you can still get it in by, if we have it, what is it, you know, week four?
Next week.
Next Thursday?
Yes.
Does that give you enough time?
I can fix, it's not, I can fix what needs to be fixed without delay. It's just, we would have, I would just need to know what I need to fix.
So does the council want to remove that position in the dollar figure associated with that?
And then the relief side on the revenue would be an offset to just reducing surplus, I would think.
Are we doing this without the department head here and giving his opinion?
That's what I was wondering.
I would recommend not doing that.
And the chief will be back.
Yeah, not this week next.
Before the, our next meeting.
But the first time we'll have a chance to discuss it with all of you is the twenty-fourth, the meeting and the budget needs to be prepared by then and ready for introduction.
I just don't think it's a big, I, I don't, personally, I don't think it's a big deal.
Right, and I think you need to look at salary and wage as a whole, right? So the negotiations we do plus the contracts we do with people. We need to make sure that it, we're really listening to what the CFO is saying and what we can afford overall, right? For everyone's salary and wage, not just one department and, and having those conversations and being involved in those conversations. And I know that's part of your job, but also to, you know, others on council, just being a part of that to know, like, hey, is this, like, look, we're coming in too tight. We have some things we have to pay. These are the things we have to do. We need to negotiate what's best for, because again, this is not our money. This is the town. This is the, the taxpayers' money. We just manage it. So we need to do what's best for the entire council or not.
Right, I, we, we did see a larger increase this year on the salary and wage side and, you know, it, it just came about a time where we went through two of our three negotiating units. We belabored this quite a bit. Some of them weren't nego, you know, solidified on time. There was a lot of negotiation back and forth. We took into consideration a lot of increase in inflation. But also, you know, as inflation increases and we try to do more for the employee, unfortunately, it also affects the taxpayers. And we did take a hit this year on our salary and wage. A lot of it is not, is already contractually resolved. I, I know, I think you just made the comment, you know, if we didn't have the reduction in the CDL forgiveness, if we didn't have the reduction in the interest on our notes, we would be in a bind this year with our, we would not have made our appropriations cap. In fact, we didn't really make it this year, but we had a bank reserve from the prior year. So having some of those offsets saved us this year, like, you know, so.
So these are just the things that we need to be mindful of as council, right, of, you know.
So we would, you're right, we would have been in a bind had it not been. And it's, it's hard to see the big picture when we're doing these negotiations or when you're doing things individually. And honestly, it is true, individual things help overall. One little thing might not make a difference, but when you do combine it overall, as we're seeing, it makes an impact. So yes, I, I, I see the side of it to be mindful of what we're doing. I can change whatever needs to be changed. We just would really have, in order to stay within statutory deadlines, we would have to introduce at the next meeting.
Would you be prepared to come to the table with two budgets? Because you literally making the decision on the fly. Budget A, budget B.
Sherry, can you reach out to the chief ahead of time and get his thoughts and justifications on why he feels this is important to have? Because maybe he doesn't. I mean, maybe he's just place holding. It sounds like he has something more in mind, but I'd like to hear.
Well, when he came to you, what did he say? I mean, because I feel like if you want another vacancy, you should have something prepared because it's not just a vacancy. It's a very, I mean, police are paid very, very well.
So again, prior to last year's budget, the vacancy had been the placeholder in their budget for, I don't want to say multiple years, but I remember seeing it in the budget. And what he said to me was, I want to start working toward this goal. This is the optimum department. This is the optimum functioning of the department. This is where I want to go and I want to work slowly toward it. And so I'd like to put this in to start slowly working towards what he felt is the optimum makeup of the department. That's what he told me.
So we can feel a certain way, that there's, you know, a sustainability factor that we have to kind of take in consideration with salary and wage. You know, is this the optimal or, you know? I just don't understand, with numbers, like where does that number come out? If I need fifteen, I need twenty.
That, yeah, and he didn't go into specifics with me without the study, but.
I guess it's because, you know, if I had this other one, then it'll be less on overtime. Like, are you cutting there? Like, it just has to make sense to me. If it doesn't right now, that's my problem.
I thought he had said, like, if we had that additional person or the reason why for the promotion, that that would reduce overtime costs.
I thought he said that when we did shift commander.
Shift commander, okay.
Right. So an additional vacancy reduce overtime at like, it just, or is it, that's where I'm just kind of lost.
You have to let him explain to you the pros and cons and where he'll see benefit.
So then perhaps we should wait.
Right, I have a bill list.
Okay.
The bill is, it's one million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Okay, everybody have a chance to review the bills? Any questions or concerns there? No? Is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes. Okay, it looks like we're to public comment and per usual, we'll start with the room first. Three minutes, please ID yourself. And make yourself known to Sherry if you're coming in on Zoom. So is there anybody in the room who would like to speak to anything? No? No? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to anything?
Any member on Zoom who would like to participate in public comment, you can raise an electronic hand or you can unmute yourself and state your name and address. Seeing none?
All right, seeing none, and we will close the floor to public comment. And we move on to final remarks by council. Dr. Davis, how about we start with you tonight?
I really don't have much to say. Happy daylight savings time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Paul Miller?
Yeah, I'm good for tonight. I think I said, I think I said enough.
It's okay.
Thank you for all your work on the budget after Kristin and I's budget workshop. We've learned a lot and we probably look forward to do with all of our newfound knowledge.
Those are the conversations I enjoy.
So thank you for being patient with me and all of my questions and concerns.
I just want to say, I really wanted to introduce the budget on National Pi Day.
I'm sorry. You're such a dork. Happy Pi Day.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Allen?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We have our meeting is next Thursday. I mean, I can say it next Thursday because the Beecham Elementary School is, has their performance next Saturday, the twenty-sixth, at the Surflight Theater. One and three o'clock, The Lion King Kids. And it's free. Donations are accepted, but not to support the elementary school. And I will remind next Thursday as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allen?
I don't have a lot to say either. You know, with everything going on in the world, I think sometimes less is more. So again, the Beecham is for a little sneak peek of it the other day. It looks like it's gonna be fantastic. I highly recommend anybody that's got the time to come out. And I guess we'll see you again next week.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Rutherford.
I just want to thank you, Sherry, for coming and bringing all this information to us and for spending the time talking to us. Some of these decisions are hard. I think it's really important to educate the community as to how the budget works, how things are impacted by what we're doing in this budget. Some things we're able to do, other things we can't. We're dictated by the state. So we work really hard on this behind the scenes and I want people to know that. We don't take this lightly, at least I don't. So thank you for your time. We'll look forward to hearing about it again next week and go from there. So, thanks.
Hey, thank you. I really don't have very much to say either. Jamie and I had the opportunity to meet with some of the business community before the meeting. It was very productive and I think, as we said, you know, always keeping the lines of communication open is the way to go. So on that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you.